All right, good evening, everybody. We'll go ahead and get the meeting started. Today is Tuesday, May 27th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under honor, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any changes to the agenda, Dr. Finch?
No changes.
All right, communications response to public comments?
At the school board meeting on May 13th, 2025, teachers from the high school expressed support for the world language program and the importance of offering options for students. A parent guardian expressed support for the high school developmental learning center program. And another parent guardian expressed support for the West Valley Innovation Center. The response of the public comment regarding world languages, the administration met with the world language teachers to review ways to provide options for students. Currently, the district has a job posting for a part-time German teacher. The position was posted part-time due to student enrollment. In the future, if student enrollment were to increase, the district would increase staffing to meet the student needs. Regarding high school developmental learning center, while out of respect for the privacy of our staff, the administration does not comment on the specifics of personnel actions. Administration does acknowledge that staffing decisions are among the hardest and most personal decisions that district leaders can make. While administration cannot provide specifics, administration certainly can attest that the administration strives to make these decisions in the most thoughtful manner possible, always with a focus on what's best for kids. Regarding the West Valley Innovation Center, administration appreciates the positive comments that were expressed during the public comment. Regarding the Innovation Center, as was shared during the presentation of the school board meeting on May 13th, the staff at the Innovation Center has a continuous improvement mindset, and they will continue to make adjustments to the instructional program based on parent and student feedback. And that's the response to public comment.
Thank you, Dr. Finch. Staff retirement recognition.
All right, so we have recognition of our retiring teachers at this meeting. And it looks like, and counselor, three of them are not here, but I see one of them is here. So that's great. So the ones that are not here, Jennifer Oberlander, nine years of service, teacher at West Valley Junior High. Carl Iverson, 14 years of service, teacher at the mid-level campus of the middle school. And Michael Yates, counselor for the middle school, 29 years of service at West Valley. Appreciate his service. And we do have Jeff Colwell here. And we saved him for the last because that's the 34 years of service. All right, there's a really nice back here for you. Give you a handshake, and handshake's all around for you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you for your years of service. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right, good to be here, Jeff. Glad you're being there. All right, great. Thank you again for your years of service. Very valuable to the school district. And next, we have high school ASB.
All right, so our junior student representative for the next couple of weeks, Katie Champy. She's going to give the high school ASB report, and then we'll have a report from Ava RC. Katie, go ahead.
Spring sports have been very successful. And on our social media for tickets, or the links for tickets are on our social media for postseason contests as well as updating updates on the teams. FFA completed another very successful plant sale and hosted farm days for elementary students. It's always fun to see them go out there, enjoy the animals. Senior parents took advantage of the May late start to host a breakfast for the class of 2025. Seniors also picked up their caps and gowns and can get their tickets at $13 each. It's getting real. As the elections are complete and we are excited for next year, we have our new junior student board representatives. We meet on June 12th to start planning for next year. Band and choir are having their final concerts and saying goodbye to their seniors. Honor Society hosted another successful blood drive. Graduation assembly and classes stepping up to the next year is on June 7th. And graduation is also soon, too. It's also exciting. We'd like to encourage the district to work with InTouch, our accounts receivable vendor, on being able to accept credit card payments. We are losing out on sales without this option. So it'd be nice to have. Sela and Grandview School Districts are using the InTouch software and hardware to accept card payments in their student stores and at their concession stands in their offices. We would love to be doing this. So that would just be like with our GISA credit cards. We'd be able to use them in school, make purchases for them. I think, I don't remember the exact amount, but a percentage of that went into our school. So that'd be the thing to have.
I appreciate the report. I did read the report prior to the meeting. I did check with our finance office. So we do have a new person in the finance office for accounting. And then right now, there's an open position for, at the high school, for the ASB secretary. So as soon as that position gets filled, then we'll be able to have the new people work together on this project.
Cool, awesome, okay. Cool, okay. Well, that is all I have. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Katie. All right, very good. And next, Ava Ferguson is our senior representative. So this is her last board meeting. And as part of our district policy, we do have an annual review. We asked the senior representative to provide their insight and a review of the school year and their experience as a student representative. So this is Ava's chance to provide that review.
Serving as a student representative to the school board in West Valley has been a valuable experience that has offered me a unique perspective on the educational system and its governance. This role has enabled me to understand the intricacies of policymaking and the challenges faced by educators and the diverse needs of students. It has also helped me to improve my public speaking skills and advocate for students in the high school. Looking ahead to next year, this position can be used for greater student engagement and advocacy. By collaborating with other student representatives and school officials, we can develop initiatives that can address critical issues that we need to solve in the high school environment. Furthermore, this experience has equipped me with leadership skills and a deeper commitment to being involved in my community, which will be beneficial to any future endeavors that work on improving educational outcomes and fostering a supportive learning environment for all students. In conclusion, I would like to thank Katie Champy for everything she has done this year, and I am excited to see her continue on as our senior school board representative. And I would like to welcome our newly elected junior school board student representative for next year, Georgia Botts.
Wonderful, thank you, Ava. And yeah, let's give her a hand. I give recognition. Steffi Smith is our administrative assistant. And Steffi made sure that we would have something to recognize your last board meeting. So go ahead and give handshakes. We have a card and a flower as well.
Thank you so much.
I guess go ahead and do a handshake.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, good job, Ava. All right, where are we now? We are on item D, I believe. Oh, yeah, item D and E. So obviously, 12 fifty students on governing board report. Ava Ferguson, senior rep, board member, student rep.
So, and then letter E is the letter of congratulations to the West Valley School District from Senator Nikki Torres. So we include that in the board packet. Again, this is, congratulations for the recognition that three of our elementary schools received this year. Only 16% of schools in the state received this recognition. And we had three this year, Autanum Valley, Cottonwood, and White Hollow. So we appreciate Nikki, Senator Torres, giving us that letter of recognition and congratulations again to those schools.
And also, just a reminder, I think, just if we could speak up, we don't have the mics. And so it's picking us up, but I think just for us being able to hear one another.
Very good. Well, that's a good point. We don't have the application, do we? All right. All right, next, school presentation. So we have Ben McMurray is here. We're here at the high school. Ben did say every year, we're doing it here at the last meeting of the year, it seems like. So we might be able to switch things around next year. But again, we'll have the high school report. And would the board like to join the audience? I know you have your laptops. We'll go ahead and join the audience for the presentation. Then we'll come back and do some question and answer.
All right, so like Peter said, it's one of those situations where I always get right at the end of the year, and then I've got all these things to do. And one of them is the board presentation. So I'm glad we could jam it all into like three weeks, which is fantastic. We're trying to maneuver that and do something different next year. Okay, so goal one for us is culture of safety and belonging. I feel like this is the one that we have strived the most for the last 10 years when I've been up here at the high school. We've been focusing on relationships. We got our core beliefs. We got our core values. All that stuff really relates to the fact that we just want to get to know kids better and make this a safe place at the high school. So there are four main things I wanted to cover today. The first one is student panels. We will talk about that pretty soon, but that's implemented this year. This is the first year we've implemented student panels. It's one of those things that, over the last couple of Zoom meetings that I've had in the last couple of years, they've said, well, how much student voice do you have? How much can you really get from the kids so that you can then form your decisions after that? And so student panels is like the next step. The first step was a couple of years ago when we put in student focus groups, which is the second bullet. Student focus groups have really been Dr. Finch and I, and sometimes a board member, depending on what your guys' schedule is like, sitting down, talking to students, and just asking questions. What can we do better? What's going wrong? What do you enjoy about the teachers you have? Lots of different questions to try to get to the fact that we need to either do something different or bring back that information to our teachers to then move in the right direction, depending on how that looks. Student surveys, I want to just kind of give you guys the student survey results, the data that we've collected over survey results for the whole year, the last couple of years. The Center for Educational Effectiveness is who we've been going through for our surveys. I adjusted that a little bit this year because I didn't, there's lots of ambiguity in liker type scales. And I'm a science guy and data guy, so it's kind of a bother for me to have those liker type scales. I just want a yes or a no. Do you feel like you're safe? Do you feel like you have somebody in the building that's actually willing to help you out if you need them? So we changed that a little bit this year, and you'll see the results a little bit later. I think it's pretty glaring that we've gotten a lot better in that regard. The fourth thing is something that we're going to do in the future. So we're going to do this next year. I came in this year thinking we're going to go ahead and focus on student panels, and we're going to do a student shadow. I told my staff that. I don't have time. I really, like, the amount of time it took for doing the student panels, there was no way we're going to be able to do the student shadow at the same time. So we have pushed that until next year. This is something we've done previously, but we want to bring back. And you'll find out later on how that worked and what that looks like. Okay, so student panels. This is what a student panel is. In the library, we've got, usually these are in tables. These tables are all, you know, in like groups. So I would actually send an email out and say, how many of you first period prep teachers would like to go ahead and be a part of our student panels? And I would get six to seven to eight responses from the teachers. And so I would go ahead and put them on a calendar invite and say, this is when we're doing them. First period, this is how we're going to go. Then, this is a managerial nightmare for me, I got to tell you. This was where the time really came into effect. So I would take all of the ninth graders, and I would put them in a wheel. All those wheels that you just click on and spin on the internet. And it would spin and randomly select a student. Then I would have to take that student, look at their schedule, find out if they had first period here in the building. And if they did, then I would put them in the panel. For sophomores and freshmen, are a lot easier to do that with. Juniors and seniors have more opportunities outside of our school. So it was a lot harder to find out who the juniors and seniors would be. I would get 16 students, four freshmen, four sophomores, four juniors, and then four seniors. Once I had that list compiled, I would go ahead and have notes for each one of them. The student gets a note during first period that says, go to the library. No information whatsoever about why. They had no idea. Because I wanted it to be kind of one of those shockers. They just show up to the library and they just do their thing. They show up. I would have a conversation with them and tell them why they're here. And then I would send them to a table that one teacher would be at in the library. We had a list of questions that we would ask them that would just kind of spur conversation. So our teachers would just sit down and hang out with one or two or three kids. That was it. And it was all about, you know, what makes you feel good about West Valley? What are some things you would change? You know, what, how's homework look? How does the classroom environment make you feel? Like those kinds of questions to get the student voice to actually come out a little bit more. Now, when I say I did this for first period, I also did this in another month for second period with different teachers and different kids and a different scenario. So that's what I mean about a managerial nightmare. Like, it was just really difficult to get all those students' voices and all those teachers at the table at the same time. And every single time we had one of these, this is the great part. I felt rejuvenated. Like, that day, hearing the kids and what they were telling us, it was invaluable, in my opinion. Like, that was just one of those things that really hit my heart. And every time after that, I would go and I would put the work in on the weekend, whatever, to try to get the other kids ready for the next month and get the other teachers ready for the next month. And I hope that the teachers felt that it was invaluable as well because just hearing the students that they might not know, talking about things that are about our building and what we want to get better, was, in my opinion, a great experience for all of us. So that's how we set up the student panels. And when I say we, it was, it was me. And then all of our teachers that wanted to be a part of that for each period, they wanted to go ahead and come in. So these are the kind of the takeaways. We used our thought partner, which is ChatGPT. It said no. And we asked them, like, what do students value in the classroom? We took everything that we had, and we lined it up, and we put it in there. And so they obviously value caring, understanding, and authentic teachers. I think most of us know that. But to hear that from the kids is really powerful because we know now that they care about what kind of teachers we have in the classroom. Welcoming structured classrooms with clear agendas, class time to complete assignments. They don't like homework, obviously. Who does? But they do really enjoy doing their assignments in class so that if they have questions, they can ask the teacher, and the teacher can come help them. They want that time with the teacher, whether that's one-on-one, or one-on-15, or one-on-25. It doesn't matter. They want to be able to raise their hand and get the work done in the classroom, which I thought was a really good feedback for our teachers. Also, they like learning life skills. We said, what do you learn in high school? And they didn't come up with things like, well, I learned how DNA, you know, extrapolates and, you know, replicates. And they didn't say anything like that at all. It was all about life lessons. It was all about conflict resolution, working with people that they usually wouldn't work with, perseverance, communication. I mean, those are, time management, those are big skills that we can't really quantify when they're in high school. But when they say that, we can definitely say that we're at least hitting those things. And that's, that's kind of a good piece of evidence for us, especially, because we want them to come out with those skills. And maybe we don't care as much that they know what a mitochondria is in science because they can look that up, and it takes five minutes to read that. But at least they understand how to conflict resolution with team members that they don't really work with. So those were some big takeaways as far as what they value in the classroom. What would they change? They want more chemist学 learning. They want hands-on learning. They want to do things. They want to do projects. They want to do fun things. Doesn't everybody, right? We all want to do that. Just doesn't always happen. They want a purposeful teacher, and they want clarity in what the teacher is doing, which I thought was interesting. A lot of times, rules and regulations we think kids don't like. In these, in these conversations we've had with them all year, they like them. They like guidelines. They like parameters. It's like the bumpers down the bowling alley, right? Like, they want something to show them exactly where they're going and what they're doing. Decrease homework, which we Decrease homework, which we all want. And then increased equity and representation. They want more people in the building to be represented, and they want more people to be in the equity circle. And that was good because, especially because, you'll see on the next slide too, they say we do it and we're working on that, but we need more, which is nice. So we're moving in the right direction, it gives us more of a guideline. So with our thought partner, when we said, okay, here's the beginning of the year, we've done this six times, because we have six periods, how has the whole evolution of the panel happened? What happened at the beginning that didn't happen at the end, or vice versa? In this case, the panel shifted from content, like content focused, to human connection. They care about the connection they have with teachers and peers. That's a big deal, especially through the whole course of a year, whether that's a freshman, whether that's a senior. They developed more relationships, they understood what was going on in the classroom more because of their connections. They were more frustrated with passive learning, not active learning, like we saw on the previous slide. They had a stronger emphasis on SEL. And I attribute this to, you know, a school year is long. Lots of stuff happens in a school year, and sometimes that's not always great stuff. And we have to realize that as teachers, and they have to realize that as kids. And when they're pushing through that stuff, the SEL stuff was a little bit more of a focus at the end of the year, because they were able to persevere and move forward and find out what their resources were at school and the people that they have at school that could get them through that. Yeah, sorry, social emotional learning is SEL. Also a growing focus on equity and culture, that was another one from the previous slide. They enjoyed the fact that we were doing that more often, and they just said, keep doing it. It's basically the big stance as far as the whole year went. So going through this, there were two major things that I really thought our staff and our students did a good job of. I thought about this before we did it, but the first thing is, our teachers really understood what the student voice was. And to hear it first person, instead of me and Peter being in a focus group and then coming back and telling them in a staff meeting, that's not very powerful, right? But hearing it first person with two or three kids saying, yes, I don't like it when a teacher does this. I'd rather have paper instead of the Google, the Chromebook. I'd rather have certain things all the time. That was much more powerful to a teacher than me coming back and saying that to the staff. So I think that was the major takeaway for the staff. The other takeaway, I think, from these student panels is the fact that our kids now know that we're listening to them, right? Like this is a big deal. We're listening to them, we want to know what they think, we want to know what they're doing, and we want to know how to get better. And every time I met with those kids before I sent them to a teacher during these student panels, I would say specifically, be honest, this, you know, you're not getting graded, you're getting out of class, which you're excited about. Just tell us the truth, and we will try to get better as a building, whether you're a senior or whether you're a freshman. You might not see the change, but we're going to try to make the change. And for students to hear that, and like I said, sixteen kids each month for six months. So we're talking about a lot of kids that we're really talking to, and these are random students, like I told you earlier. And that's not including the students that we have on the focus groups. So we're actually talking about more kids than that that are hearing us say, what can we do? What can we do better? How can we do this to make it easier for you to come to school and easier for you to learn? That's all we really care about. And so those two major things, the staff hears the kids, say what they want, and the students understand that we care. That really was the two major emphasis of this whole project. Soon, we're going to be doing a shadowing project that also allows our staff to understand our students a little better as far as how a whole school day goes. But that's, that's kind of what we're trying to do, is get more student voice, and then hopefully use that to move forward in what we want to change in the building as a staff. So that was my section. This is the student survey results, which is very in line with our goal one. By the way, these are the things that we actually put in place, Sarah's going to talk.
So you could see in like fall of twenty-three, it was fairly low in certain areas. You know, do you feel safe at the high school? Sixty-two percent, which is okay, but definitely not good enough. And over time, as we went on through the year, we started, you know, skipped kind of the twenty-three, twenty-four, started back in fall of twenty-four, we're showing results at seventy-one percent and gradually going up. You may notice that from December to February, there's a little bit of a drop. We attributed that to the changing of semesters and students having a new schedule with new teachers they may not necessarily be familiar with. And then the next question is, do you have at least one adult at the high school that you've been talked to if you have a problem? Again, it was really low in the fall of twenty-three. This year is a little bit higher, we're really focused on relationships in twenty-three, twenty-four with students and staff. And so you can see it again is increased. Now, these dates are given to us by the central office, dictated, and we're very purposeful and intentional about setting time aside in our Ram Strong classes to make sure that our students have the opportunity to take this survey. We're averaging, sorry, about seven hundred students right on there that are taking the survey for us for our results. Ben, you might have to do this.
I'm the challenge all the time. So Ben mentioned the student shadowing, and that was pretty amazing. Now, we did a lot of this that year of COVID, twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty. And you got the opportunity to pick a student, ask that student, and I spend the day with you. And that's from the time the student comes to school, you go to every class with that student, you eat lunch with that student and their friends, and you spend the day with that student. And it's really enlightening, I think, that I don't know if staff here have that opportunity to do that, but to recognize how difficult it is to sit for that amount of time in a classroom every day and not want to fall asleep or get agitated or be bored or want to learn more. Unfortunately, we did not have the opportunity to meet as a staff to discuss the outcomes of that together as a group, because the day we had that scheduled was the day we found out that we're really going to go into lockdown. So we had time purposely set aside to have opportunity to do that. But it was a wonderful experience, we're hoping to start that again next year. And I had opportunity to spend time with a student who some people would say would be challenging. And it was very enlightening for me to have opportunity to go through that day with her.
Goal four for us is focused on freshman success. Part of the reason that's one of our main goals is that we know historically in education, that's at the high school level, that when a student's going to drop out, it's, it's at ninth grade. Generally speaking, after the first semester of ninth grade, if they don't have success as they come forward. And so we have done a couple of things, done some tracking of the first semester grades. Got that data kind of broken down on what we found. We actually didn't just track freshman success, we're just carrying this one right now. This focuses on freshmen, but we did it for all classes, both freshmen, sophomore, juniors, and seniors. Part of our dashboard information that we're working on collecting.
And what we see when you look at the big picture is that students, as they mature, have more success, because they kind of figure out high school a little bit. And so that success rate increases, the failure rate increases as we go through. So hard data as we went through first semester grades, seventy-five percent passing all classes. That equated to two-hundred-and-forty-six students off the class. The national average, by the way, is seventy-thirty split. So we're above the national average there at semester time. So out of that failing rate, right, we're at twenty, twenty-four point five percent, failing at least one class. We broke that down even lower, thirty-seven students actually were just plunking one. Passing everything else, but they've got the one, oh. And then you look down a little bit further, two or more classes, fifty-two students, or fourteen percent out of that twenty-four, became important. And there's some other issues that come into play when you look at that multiple failure rate, attendance being one of them. Current, we have a monthly DNF list that we kind of collect out of the counseling office and look at. And so this was as of the twenty-first of this month, just looking at the freshmen, knowing they still have three and a half weeks to fix their grades, to get things better. Sixty-eight percent passing all of their classwork. So that's two-hundred-and-thirty-eight students. You can see it's behind where they were at semester time. And thirty-one point two percent failing at least one. We didn't delineate any farther than that, just because it could all change anyway. And we'll track that again when semester grades come out. A lot of kids who are on the list right now, on the DNF list, were on the list first semester. Some repeaters as we go through. So one of the things that we did to try and address this, we created a high school one-on-one class. This was intentional, CTE-funded for incoming ninth graders, really targeting. We targeted them based on their academic lack of success as an eighth grader coming to the high school. So if they struggled in one or more of their core classes, we gave them high school one-on-one. Study skills essentially as a support system, with the caveat that they have a way to earn their way out of the high school one-on-one class, and that is, get to the end of the semester and be passing all of your classes. Clearly it shows that you don't really need that support anymore, and you could get rid of that elective, take something else. And there were a number of kids who that happened to, who had success and got out. At the same time, there are also some kids who had the success but asked to stay because they liked the support. And there were kids where even despite having study skills, it didn't make much of an impact on their success rate and their academic courses first semester. So they got to stay for second semester, and now we'll see if that's had any influence as we go through. The high school one-on-one course teachers spend a lot of time, like they've met, they met a lot early in the semester because they're creating a class from scratch, basically. And so they met a lot to confer with each other about what and when, as far as organizing things, as far as helping good study habits and trying to get kids on the right track early, and what was working for me and what's not working, and kind of having that conversation and building through. One of the things that we're finding is probably not a bad idea for us to have like a high school two-on-one class in the future. That's what we see from the bigger data when you look at all four grades together, is yeah, there's some improvement for sophomores. It's not huge. I mean, the biggest growth in the lack of failure, there's some improvement from sophomore to junior, but it's really from junior to senior that it really leaps quite a bit. And there's very few seniors who end up failing on a core academic course. And by then, they kind of figured out how to be a student and adjust it as they need to. But we're seeing enough where we know that freshman and sophomore years, we've got some ability to have some work, which creates an opportunity for Mrs. Daly to talk about peer tutoring.
Yeah, so I'm Erica Daly, math teacher at the high school. So my first year here was twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one. And one of the big problems that we saw, as talked about before, all of these freshmen and sophomores failing classes really early on, and particularly math. So math affects students just differently than other subject areas. So we saw a need there, and it kind of just started with plucking a, hand-selecting a TA for myself for each of my math classes, and hand-selecting them from my honors older two class for the next year, with the intent of seeking kids who I've heard explain things well or has been extra kind of resilient toward a variety of student behaviors. Kind of things don't faze them, they get along with everybody, those are the students I was looking for. So they became my TAs year one, and that was the twenty-three, twenty-four, no, that was the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. That was when we kind of started planning. And then when we saw that that was helpful, having a peer in the room who could help students and run groups with students, that was really effective, and we decided that it should be accessible by everyone in the school. So we started talking and looking and decided that year one, it would be a math focus. And instead of having one TA for just my class, I would have two to five tutors per class period, and the rest of the teachers in the school could check them out. So we had a check-in, check-out system. Teachers could reach out to me and request a tutor for a given day based on an activity that they had planned, a student who was struggling perhaps, who needed a week. Kind of, it was a fit-the-mold trial and error experience. And what happened is the same five or six teachers utilized it all year long, but pretty much those two to five kids were in my class period each day, and they didn't always have things to do. So we evolved it, and we're in now year two of officially having a peer tutoring program. So year two looks like this. We essentially set up a TA program but for tutors. So students can choose to be a tutor for a teacher of their choosing. And this year, it started as myself hunkered down in front of the counseling office that first week of school, trying to recruit kids for the high school one-on-one program, the Algebra One classes, my co-taught geometry inclusive classes, the other co-taught algebra classes, and science. Science is the other big need. So we threw those in the mix, and we just started recruiting kids who were coming in for schedule changes. So we found students who could fit very specific spots, and we made that work. Those students then met with me on a weekly basis, they engaged in weekly online discourse. They were given a topic of discussion each week that they would engage in about educational equity and some of the things psychologically that they probably don't understand that go behind what we do and what we teach. They then met with me on Mondays during their Ram Strong time. So it was only about a fifteen-minute meeting, but they engaged in activities where they learned strategies on how to get through tricky kids or prickly kids. They learned strategies on exactly what situations is within their power to engage with and what situations is out of their power and needs to be passed off. They were taught confidentiality elements, they were taught how to structure a lesson plan effectively. They were taught how to approach, how to teach something from multiple angles. And through that, some of them evolved and did really, really well, and some of them found out it wasn't, wasn't the way fit for them, which is fine. And so that, that's the year that we're in right now. Second semester, so first semester, we had thirty-one students in the program dispersed throughout the school. This semester, we have forty-one. Thirty, I believe, of which I didn't look at, look at all of it, but I believe the, we only lost one from first semester. So one student who had been peer tutoring first semester opted to not continue second semester. So all of that student, all of those students continued forward, and we gained some work. That leads us to this year, this coming year. So year three, the plan is to partner with National Honor Society, that I now advise, and begin establishing a give-back mentality within our honor society that focuses on the community of West Valley School District. So we will continue, we are now having, teachers were given a recruitment letter that they could adjust to their liking, hand out to students, and recruit their own tutors for next year. Those were supposed to be returned back into my mailbox by this coming Monday, and I checked my box today, and there are already twenty slips in there. So that's just the students who were recruited and asked. That doesn't necessarily mean that they'll all stay, that they all won't move on to Running Start or YU Tech, but we have kids interested, so. The National Honor Society students will tutor in the library after school. That's something that they burn their hours for. But another way that they can get their hours next year will be to partner up with an underclassman and tutor outside of the school day to allow for equitable access to tutoring for everyone. So if you engage in sports, you cannot participate and partake in after-school tutoring. If you do not drive, you cannot partake in after-school tutoring. If you do not have a ride, you can't partake in after-school tutoring. So by partnering an NHS member with them as a peer, they also will get access whenever they need it. The plan is to put the sign-up for that as a QR code in every math and science classroom and in the counseling office so that students have and in the counseling office so that students have very easy access to sign up for tutoring. Okay. The, the other thing is I brought a couple of blurbs from current peer tutors. They wanted you to know about the program and what they've pulled from it. I will also give you their names. Okay. The first peer tutor is Audrey Keller. She's a current senior. She's peer tutored for two, two years now. She was one of my TAs during the first round year one. And she was selected out of my honors algebra two class. And she told me that year that she wanted to be a math teacher. And she has not wavered on that. So she has peer tutored for me, she has peer tutored for her other math teachers, and she is fully ready to go to Central and become a math teacher. So this is hers. "I have had such a wonderful experience being a peer tutor for the past two years. Being a tutor has prepared me for my future career as a teacher in so many ways. I've learned a lot from my mentor teachers. I think any student interested in education should have to have this opportunity to know if it's what they want to go into and to gain experience. I got to teach lesson plans while in high school. I'm grateful to have had the opportunity of being a peer tutor." The next one is from a student who would like to remain anonymous. They have peer tutored for two years. "This student in particular comes to me every single morning telling me about their babies. Their babies are their freshmen and sophomores in their biology class that they tutor for. "I have enjoyed being a biology peer tutor at West Valley for the entirety of my junior year. I plan on doing it next year. I've learned both communication and perspective skills. I have learned how to communicate new concepts and techniques to mostly sophomores, but also a few freshmen, many of which have had a hard time at school and have a very different approach to learning compared to myself. That very fact was one that I had to learn to approach differently very quickly. I have overall had a great time and have learned so much from this program. I've also gotten better at biology. I've learned to appreciate all students, especially those most different to myself as those, as those students have taught me to appreciate everyone, perspectives and learning styles. I genuinely feel that I'm a better person after this program and many dedicated students would benefit being a peer tutor as well, as well as those benefiting from having a free and fair tutor that is possibly going through similar experiences." The third one is another hand-selected one. This was Natasha Colombo. Okay. "Peer tutoring has granted me so many opportunities that I would not have had otherwise. It's given me the ability to have empathy for everyone, especially people who have forms of learning in a way that I would not have had. It's easy to get into your own bubble when it comes to education. And peer tutoring has forced me to abandon that mindset. It's given me the patience and insight to seek out students who may have been given up on by a tired teacher or a frustrated parent and offer them a new perspective that day. Peer tutoring is a unique opportunity because it's a way to level with a student peer, a way to level with a student peer-to-peer instead of an adult authority figure, which is sometimes daunting for students. One of the most exciting moments was this year in Algebra One class, seeing a student in class who slept almost every day and is very much at risk. Begin to understand a math concept and do the problems correctly after I prompted him with just a pencil and a calculator. That's all it took. Sometimes peer tutoring is just encouraging students to get over their fear barrier and take the first step to asking a teacher themselves." And that one, I chose to read last because that one is probably the most critical. "They are so afraid to ask for help. And just having someone available who they can ask and can be accessed to has opened up doors for them across the board." We do also have a graduating senior who has been in peer tutoring for two years, who is, was in a RAM success and probably would have qualified for a high school one-on-one program had it been available to her her ninth grade year. She was failing classes sophomore year, started to turn things around a little bit. And then junior year, we offered her to help out with some of these kids because she had made a serious behavioral change and we thought that that would be good. She calls them her babies as well. She's one of the ones that begs to stay in high school one-on-one because those are her babies. So if we can get more high school students paired up with younger kids, it's making a difference.
So piggyback off of that, I've seen Natasha in class and, and she has a heart for those kids. I know exactly who she's talking about, by the way. I've seen her work with students and it's really awesome. She really has, at the end of the semester at least, like gotten to the point where she just calls them out. She just makes them uncomfortable, just like a teacher would. Says, "Why is your head on the table? What are you doing? What do you need? Like, well, you need a calculator? I'll get a calculator for you. You want a pencil?" You know, like she just, she totally nails them the whole time. And from peer to peer, that really does make a difference rather than just it being an adult, which they've heard continuously throughout their life telling them what to do. It's nice to hear it from a peer as well. So Natasha's been fantastic in that program. I did want to take one more second and just recognize Mr. Jeff Caldwell because he, he was one of my math teachers going through high school, high school here at West Valley. I do have to say that he was fantastic for me and I appreciate all your time and effort in, in West Valley and all that you've done, Jeff. Thank you so much. That is all we have as a presentation. Are there any questions?
Hey Ben, in case I missed it, what's the, what's the difference between the student panels and the focus groups?
So focus groups last for a whole semester. And so I've got the same group of students that come in once a month on their lunch period. And we just sit down and talk, you've been there. And, and so that, those students stay for the whole semester, basically. And they just get a note saying, remember, you've got lunch in the conference room. And then we have a conversation with them. So we try to change up the questions every single time. For the student panels, we keep the questions fairly similar. And it's different teachers asking those questions and different students all the way.
Mr. McMurray, just two quick questions. Thank you so much for that presentation. That was awesome. I'm looking at page six of the slide. How do you go from thirty-two to eighty-seven? What's that story?
A couple, a couple of things. Okay, so the first one is we started doing the CEE surveys before anybody else in the district. So we had more data points along the way.
Yeah.
And we didn't necessarily teach the kids about the, the questions that were being presented, but what we did was alter the questions that were being presented. As I referenced a little bit ago, it was more of a Likert scale. Do you agree? Do you strongly agree? Do you somewhat agree? Do, there was lots of neutrality. I don't like neutrality. I'm a science guy, I'm a data guy. I can't stand that. I'm a yes or no guy. And so what we did was we adjusted that and we gave out our own Google form that we sent out. And it was just yes or no. And so I really attribute some of that increase to the fact that they, there was no neutrality.
Yeah.
There was no maybe. It was all just yes or no. Like make a decisive decision and figure it out.
Okay.
Does that answer?
Yeah, I, I think that that answers a lot of it. The second part of it is if you were to remove the questions and remove the neutrality, how do you pair up a student with a teacher? What's that look like? Because the question was, I don't, I have a teacher who has my back or I have a teacher who sees. How does that happen?
So in the ten years I've been here, my main focus when I first started, and you can probably ask any staff member, I would hope at least, there's some here. My main focus was on relationships. It was all about relationships and trying to get that done. I've been a coach, I've been a teacher. I noticed when I, when I've been in this business that if you have a relationship with a kid, they will do anything for you. And that, and that, they, it doesn't mean they're not going to screw up once in a while. They're not going to make mistakes, right? We all make mistakes. But at least they'll come and talk to you and at least they'll have a relationship with you to come have a conversation around what they did wrong. And then hopefully when they get back, they'll be fine. And so that was my main focus going into this whole business, I guess you could say. And I think that really does show itself in these questions. Like if, if we've been developing relationships for six, seven, eight years, RAM Strong being one of those big things, right? Like having conversations with students about grades, their families, what we can do to make them better. That just instills more of the culture in the building for teachers to say, well, I've got to make a relationship with this kid, especially in a RAM Strong class. That's my job, right? Like that's what I do. I don't have to push content. I could just hang out with kids and be relative.
So then you see RAM Strong as one of those lunch pieces?
Oh, yeah, big time.
Okay, that's cool. And then, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no.
Just the final question on, on slide nine. A hundred and eight students and that thirty-one point two percent. About how many of those students are in math? Because it seems like we're taking a lot of retroactive steps to really address math. But is that the number one?
Number one failing class?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then do you know about percentage?
I don't.
Okay.
I'd have to dive deeper into that. I wouldn't want to give you, throw out a percentage.
I have a question for you, Ben. I'm sorry.
No, yes.
Much simpler. That's what my colleagues. So my experience, when you get to more and more people, students in this case, getting involved, we have more and more groups, a lot of times there's such a wide array of things that they might come up with or respond to. Is there anything that you could point to that along the way, there was sort of a general consensus that the students agreed on or points that they consistently came through and said, this is something that, you know, we feel needs focus?
There's one main question that I ask most of the students nowadays. Peter can attest to this because we do it in our, well, I do it, I should say, in, in all of our panels and all of our discussions with kids. It's, it's, have you been at West Valley the whole time? Have you been here your whole entire educational career? And when I ask that question, it's shocking. It's shocking that eighty percent of the students are like, no, I, I didn't. You know, I, I came in at fifth grade, I came in at eighth grade, I came in at tenth grade. And to hear their stories about like how, how the transition was and how different it is here was, was very telling to me. I don't know if it has been for Peter, but it's, it's shocking to me. They, they enjoy the transition, although it's harder, it's more rigorous. It's what we usually get in those, in those conversations. But they, they figure it out. Like they figure it out and they know that they have a relationship with this, with a teacher. Which I, again, going back to it, ten years, we've been working on this. And it's not like you can just check the box and say, we're good with that. Like we have to continue to do that all the time. But I would say that those students really do find a connection somewhere. We have more clubs than we ever have. We have more opportunities for them to be connected than we ever have. They don't have to play a sport. They don't have to be honor society. They don't have to have all that stuff. There's always a spot for them there if they want. And we just try to provide those opportunities for them to want that. And then hopefully cultivate that if they find the motivation to move that direction.
Okay. And then one follow-up question. Again, large number of students, which I really like a lot. I think that's very important. Just given the volume of it, I'm assuming, or maybe not, that they get chances to, or multiple chances to be on both of those different groups, whether it's the student panel or the focus groups, over the course of time, they may serve three or four times. Because as things go on, their perception and their views may change as well. So I'm just wondering if that's something that happens a lot and are they willing participants when it comes to that? Or do they say, I've done my turn, let somebody else try?
So, so I have given the option for some of them, especially for the lunch that we, that we do, the student focus groups. And mainly that's because I don't want to take them away from their social. They enjoy hanging out at lunch and with their, with their peers. So I have given them the option. And it's funny, some semesters, it, there, I've got half of the kids that are like, no, I'd rather just hang out with my friends and eat lunch, which is totally fine. I'm cool with that. Now, the other one, the student panel, there is no option. It says go to the library. You're going to the library if you're at school at that time. So it's just, it's kind of one of those things where we're trying to catch all the students, but we don't want to impose on them. A semester-long commitment is kind of difficult. And I don't want a kid to be uncomfortable if they don't feel like coming. But I, I have to tell you, and I'm sure, almost all of you guys have been at the student panels, when they come in and I tell them why we're doing it and I send them to a teacher, they have no idea who it is. They are really open and honest. Like they could care less. They, they say exactly what's on their mind and then they leave. And they're done. Like they're fine with it. There, there's no issue there whatsoever. And we get really honest conversations out of the kids, which is fantastic. That's what we want, right?
So lastly, not, not another question, just to commend you and your staff for reaching out to students the way you do. I think that is so important to get their involvement, their input. And most importantly, giving them a sense of being a part of something. I think that's really important. So great job on doing that.
Thanks, man.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the, it's obvious there's a, there's a desire from you and the teachers to continue to grow and to learn and, and to not be just okay with the status quo. And so I, it comes out in your presentation. And then also just recognizing too, I think, the blurbs that you shared from your students. I appreciate the, the, what you go through in order to select those students. But it just seems like they have a lot of social intelligence and just awareness of maybe where the students are, the other students that they're helping. And so I think there's a lot that goes into selecting those students as well. So I would say kudos, good job on that. And my question, Mr. McMurray, is not related to your presentation, but.
Great.
The, the board actually gets a safety and incident behavioral report every month from all the schools. And I've noticed over the last few months that it seems like the high school is significantly lower in the amount of behavioral incidents compared to maybe the middle-level campus. Is there something that you attribute to that? And maybe there's, I, I understand there's a maturity level at the mid-level, but it just, it's, it's stuck out to me the last few months.
I'm glad you looked at that because we pride ourselves, especially our administration, in making sure, like at the beginning of the year, these are new freshmen, right? Like they don't know us, we don't know them. So it takes a, a time to kind of develop those relationships with the families and the kids and try to figure all that stuff out. And then there's a point where we just say, we're not doing this. Like this is just not going to happen. If it does, we're going to go ahead and discipline that. It's not, doesn't mean we don't love you and we don't think that you're going to get better after that. But, but we got to do what we got to do. We got to support our teachers and support our building. And so I think our students understand that after a while. We might give a little bit too much grace depending on who you are and how that looks and if that, those twenty-five kids are in your class or not. But we, we do the best we can to develop those relationships in that period of time. And I do think second semester it gets way easier because those kids know our expectations. They know the guidelines, they know the rules. And we have great support from Central Office to just continue having a line, right? Like having a line, making sure the kids know that they can go up to it, but not beyond it. I was one of those kids in class that I knew exactly where the line was and I would go up to it, but not beyond it. So everybody understands that, right? And that's kind of where we were at and what, what we do. We also have a lot more options, I have to say. With the RAM Flex program that we instilled the last couple of years, like there's other options for students. So if they can't take a full day, we have a half-day option for them. If they can't take a half-day option, we have a one-day option for them where they just come in and meet with Mrs. Vasilka on Fridays. Like we've created more options for those students that struggle to be here all day long. And I think that's been a lot easier for us as far as disciplinary and behavioral issues. Is there anything else I missed? Does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, thank you. I think, yeah, I think there's two, two things I heard is creating a clear line and options for students.
Yep.
So I appreciate that.
Well, I'm just really, the word that comes to my mind as I've sat here during the presentation and thinking about our high school students and our staff and everything, it's just the word impressed. More than anything else, I'm really impressed by a lot of things that I've heard today. I love that we are seeking, we are intentional about seeking student voice in what goes on up here at high school. I love the peer mentoring initiative. It is such a blessing in any aspect of your life to help another person. And the fact that we are doing something intentional here at the high school, that at the core of it is every one of those core values is awesome. So kudos to all of you guys for making that work. I just think, I think it's great. I just, I have a question about decrease in homework. And the voice of, of decrease in homework. And so, you know, you've heard me say before, boards heard me say this, I've said this a lot. I'm a well-educated person, I'm not a professional educator. So my question is about the balance between, and I'm using, I'm using, I'm using the decrease in homework feedback as an example, not the only thing. But, but I'm intrigued by this because I think everybody that is in this room that has gone through some level of education has, has experienced those teachers that didn't give us a lot of homework and then those that gave us a lot of homework. And I didn't like a whole lot of homework, but the. And I didn't like a whole lot of homework, but the work, the doing the work was in my best interest as a student. So I think it's, everything is in balance and moderation. But I guess the question that answers is, how do you balance taking in a student voice on that particular issue versus the educator saying, you know what? But in your best interest, that the homework, the balance of having some homework, that timing in five, that timing outside of class to do the work does have value. How do you balance that between hearing the student and balancing that in your best, you know, what's best for the students from an educator's perspective? Does that make sense what I asked?
Do you want me to answer that?
Go ahead.
Math has been fighting AI since 2007.
Sure.
So we've been fighting photo math since 2007. I've never not taught with AI in math. So what is done outside of the classroom is completely unusable for me. So the morph that has happened with math education because of that is now our role as math educators is to assess their thinking and monitor their thinking and hear their thinking and see their thinking intervene when it's false. And intervene when it's problematic or when it has errors. And we can't do that if everything happens at home. And so I also think that when we ask students that question about homework, their definition of homework and our definition of homework is different. Their definition of homework is when the teacher says the word, this is homework. That's what they think homework is. And ask any student, and it is when they say at the end of the lesson, this is homework. That's what students think it is and we know that. So when we hear them say, no more homework, they don't mean, don't make me ever do anything at home. They mean, give me an opportunity to do it at school. If I don't finish, I do it at home. And that's the logical homework that comes naturally. So it's not that no students are getting homework.
Yeah.
It's that we are not teaching lecturing all period and then saying, here's the assignment, do it at home, bring it back to me tomorrow while grading on my own time. We're just going to
And the word coming back from home might not be authentic, right?
Correct, because we don't know what.
Depending on what program you want to throw it into online. So that's the hard part for our teachers. They, math has been battling it more than any other department for years. Slater.com, go down the list. There are so many things you can just plug in an equation and it shows all the work. And you can plug it into a homework section and get a hundred percent on them. So they have definitely been dealing with it the most. But I did think that it was interesting in our student panel group, and Jeff has been part of most of them. So you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I felt like the students' voice was really, we want to work on things in class so that we have the teacher to help. And if it's a practice thing, I've already got it, I just need to practice it, I'll do that at home, that's fine. I could do that. But when I have questions and I need help from somebody, I want to do it in class. That's what we felt like that homework situation was.
And I definitely picked up on that. Thank you for that answer. That was not as I considered in my thought process. So thank you. Wasn't necessarily talk for forty-five minutes and then here's your assignment to do at home.
That's just what they think.
No, no, but that's, that's, but see, that's a perspective that, again, I don't have. I'm not in the building. I'm, you know, the parent of a former high school student who, to the point of, I would like help. At least from my observation with my students, all of you or all of our staff was very available, not just during class time. You know, Campbell felt like she could always email anybody anytime and get an answer in a, you know, not, some teachers email back at night. That's not necessarily the expectation. But, but got a timely answer. And so that, I mean, again, from my observation, I appreciate that our students do that. But that's, thank you for that answer back. I didn't really necessarily think, when I was asking or formulating this question, I was thinking, oh yeah, we're going to talk for forty-five minutes and then here's the assignment to do at home. Not necessarily. Thank you for that perspective. Good.
All right. Just a quick curiosity question. Do we know, you're talking about life skills and students talk about having more life skills. Do we have any kind of financial fitness class, like insurance, banking, budgets? Or is that incorporated into some of the math classes or?
We have a financial algebra class that most seniors take. And that one does hit most of those requirements, yes. Of course, your honors kids, your AP kids probably aren't going to hit that class because it's more of a moving on from senior year class. But it definitely helps out with taxes and all the stuff that you would have to be to functionally.
And the nice thing about that class, it is a college and high school class. And the students are planning to go on to a humanities major. It counts as their college-level math. So I've had students come back and tell me how much they appreciate having taken that class and it's, they've been able to knock out their math when they're still here at West Valley High School.
Very relevant.
I also just kind of go along with that. I know that some of us, like we are senior Ram Strong advisors this year and we started the school year co-teaching together. And we incorporated a lot of financial things that we wanted, we knew our students would need to know about going into, for post-secondary opportunities, regardless of what they were. We talked about credit card debt, what it looked like for compounding interest, the differences between the different kinds of loans that are available out there for education or for like daily purchases and things like that. So there's a lot of us on campus that have just incorporated, started to incorporate more of those real-life financial skills into what we do in Ram Strong because the kids have asked for it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great discussion.
Thank you, Mr. McMurray.
All right. Now we move on to public comments. I have to read my little script here. And this is an area where if you have anything that's not basically on the agenda, non-discussion agenda items, I just feel you to give us some comment and input. I know the board generally does not respond to those inputs, but we will take you down and open and respond to them at a later meeting with the public comments from the, for the response to public comments from the superintendent. So members of the public who would like to provide a public comment will sign in. Speakers will be called in the order that they signed in to speak. Speakers will be given three minutes for their comments. Public comment is not the proper forum to address concerns about a specific staff member. The person has concerns about a specific staff member, they should make an appointment with the superintendent to address their concerns. So with that, we have two speakers, Jennifer Nelson.
Good evening again. My name is Jennifer Nelson and I'm speaking again this evening as both a parent and a teacher. I spoke two weeks ago. I've taught Spanish at the high school here for twenty-five years and I have two elementary-age daughters. I'm speaking again to express my support for the district maintaining two world language offerings for our students in grades eight through twelve, beginning as soon as possible. On April fifteenth, following the last school board meeting, our department met with Dr. Finch, Principal Amber Stiles-Gill and Principal Ben McMurray to discuss the vision for world languages in the West Valley School District. During the meeting, Dr. Finch expressed both his support and commitment to maintaining two world language offerings for West Valley students. Our district administrators understand that a well-articulated sequenced world language program supports our students' development in many meaningful ways. Our department presented several viable options for recruiting and retaining a highly-qualified world language instructor in a language other than Spanish. I want to thank Dr. Finch and our building administrators for expressing their support, but I also urge them to prioritize funding for this position as soon as possible. The current posting for a point-six FTE German teacher will honestly make it extremely difficult to attract a qualified candidate from outside our region, especially as German is no longer offered at any other Valley high schools. Before tonight's meeting, I did review Dr. Finch's response to public comment and I was disappointed by his statement. And I quote, "In the future, if student enrollment were to increase, the district would increase staffing to meet student enrollment needs." In my view, this language does not reflect a clear or proactive vision for sustaining or growing world language opportunities for our students. In recent years, other specialized programs such as instrumental music, vocal music and ROTC have also faced enrollment challenges. Yet, the district has continued to prioritize funding for these positions. I respectfully ask that the district do the same for world languages in grades eight through twelve. Thank you for your time and your continued commitment to our students.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Janay Larson.
I feel kind of short at this table. My name is Janay Larson and I'm a Spanish teacher here at West Valley High School. This is my seventh year as a Spanish teacher here and my seventeenth year in teaching overall. I'm also a mother of a teenage daughter here in our building. I would like to thank and acknowledge Dr. Finch, Amber Stiles-Gill and Ben McMurray for meeting with the World Languages Department two days after the last board meeting. Our department was very excited to share the three immediate solutions that we developed, any of which worked and covered a variety of situations based off of the zero-point-six part-time German position, which has since closed with zero applicants. We've been told it would reopen, but as of now, it is not reopened. However, I'm disappointed that Dr. Finch did not share the three viable, potentially money-saving alternatives that our department presented with you, the board, nor has he committed to any decision. Each of these options had a vision and a plan for the long-term success and health of another language position other than Spanish here at West Valley High School. There does not seem to be any commitment to embrace having another language other than Spanish being taught here. This means that our students, one of many things, is that this means that our students who come to us as already bilingual in English and Spanish cannot learn another language from our district. What a travesty. We know that sometimes there have been down years in other programs, as my colleague mentioned. For example, coming back from COVID, especially our ROTC program didn't have enough students to maintain two teachers. Instead of cutting a position, the teachers taught other courses like photography. Now the program has rebounded and is thriving. This has happened with choir, band, art and in many other instances. It has been done for the benefit of our students and we're good, correct decisions. The stakeholders in those situations were listened to and solutions were found. The commitment to the long-term health of our student, of student choice was made. That is not what is happening within our department right now. Research shows that learning another language positively impacts the personal, cognitive, professional and cultural well-being of students. A study in Tennessee showed that students who studied a world language in high school had higher cumulative college GPAs than equally academically talented peers without such language study. In a study published earlier this year by Perkins and Zane, it is shown that second language learners have significantly higher neuroimaging activity in the language and speech center of the brain and more quickly move information from short to long-term memory. I could go on and on about the benefits of learning a second language, but I won't. As a district, we tout that student choice, just like we saw in this presentation tonight. And doing, and we tout that we value student choice and doing what's best for kids. But here we are without a commitment to hiring a teacher that teaches another language other than Spanish. It is these kinds of decisions that disheartens and dismay's and causes us to lose students to other districts that offer what we do not, what we could. Peter, thank you again for meeting with us. I find my interactions with you engaging and meaningful. I urge you to be decisive in making a commitment to bringing in another world language teacher other than Spanish here at West Valley High School. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right. Since we only had two individuals that signed up to speak, we do have a few extra people here in the room. I will open it up if any of you individuals would like to step up to the mic with a comment. This is your opportunity. All right, seeing none, we'll move on. A public comment closed. Okay, approval consent agenda. There are a number of items here. As usual, we have for the board members to look at or should have looked at perhaps by now. If anyone would like to pull something out of there that they want to discuss further, if not, I'll entertain a motion by a board member to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda A, K through F.
Thank you, Mr. Walcott. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, items A through F. We'll go ahead and vote. All those who approve signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, saying say. Motion carries five zero. I'm sorry, I said motions A through F. My copy here has A through D. Oh, no, it's turned over. I see it, there's A through F. Okay. Moving on. Now we have discussion items, policies and instructional materials. So, Dr. Finch, you want to give us any background?
Yeah, we'll start with policies. So the policies are listed later under action items. There was a cover memo about the various policies. We have second reading for policy forty-sixty. The second reading adds the language that was suggested by Michael Thorne. And then we also, you know, Michael had pointed out that the procedures would need updating. So we have a draft of the procedures updated and the forum has been updated as well. They're ready to post tomorrow as soon as we get approval for second reading. And just again, the language that we added in there was that the exceptions would be granted on a case-by-case basis with a commercial business that partners with the school district to enhance the student experience. So I wanted to make sure that it was clear that it was something that would enhance the student experience. The next policy was kind of, I'll give you all the policies and then we can open it for discussion. Next policy is a new policy, would be new for the district. It's based on legislation that clarified that transition kindergarten is not an entitlement. So kindergarten, the program for five-year-olds, is an entitlement. If you are five years old and you live in a high school district, you're entitled to go to kindergarten. But transition kindergarten is not an entitlement. It's based on funding that's available by the state. So they may appear that transition kindergarten is not an entitlement and the legislation that passed. And so we need to have policy that's updated regarding transition kindergarten. Next is policy five zero one one, sexual harassment of district staff prohibited. And so it's update the legal definition of sexual harassment for five zero one one. And then the final revision here of policy six eight zero one is increasing the dollar amount for a small attractive item from five thousand to ten thousand. And so anything greater than ten thousand is a capital asset. So that's the main change there. They actually, was it had some policy revision of the language? Our previous policy was just kind of written out as a list. So it reads much better as a policy with the revision that's suggested by Wallace. And so superintendent's recommendation is to approve these revisions and adoption of policy as presented.
Okay. Michael? Any further discussion on item B there? I thought there was a change in?
We'll go ahead and, we'll have a discussion first with policies.
Okay.
And then we'll handle just the instructional materials.
All right. Anybody have any issues they would like to discuss further, policies?
I may have a question, the transition to kindergarten. Do we expect that funding to go down?
Oh, well, yeah, it's a good question about the funding. So, you know, the last legislative session, you know, the state was looking at reduction in the revenue. So there was, basically the compromise was they didn't increase it, but they didn't decrease it. So in some ways, you could say we came out, you know, in a way that is going to continue to benefit our students in West Valley. We have two classes, one in Cottonwood and one in Apple Valley. And so we're going to be able to maintain those two classes. But it was very clear that no district's going to be allowed to increase the number of transition kindergarten classes and no district, if they don't have it right now, they're not going to be able to start it up. So it was good that we were able to start up our transition kindergarten when we did because we're going to be able to maintain the classes that we have. But really good question about where they're at.
And I think just for clarity, fifty eleven, I think we're just, we're just returning to the twenty-twenty Title IX, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Policies issued? Anyone? All right. Now do we want to go ahead and take additional materials?
Next, we're All right. So, the next action item is adoption of instructional materials, and so, we've had our committees working throughout the school year. We were able to, because it was English language arts, we wanted to make sure that the materials that were identified for potentially for adoption were done in December, so that we'd get time for community members and board and instructional materials committee to read the materials during the spring. And so, we did have the instructional materials committee meeting. Some of the materials that were piloted were not moved forward for adoption based on, you know, the teachers deciding that they did not want to move forward with adoption. And then a couple of materials that were actually approved by the instructional materials committee, we wound up having a teacher that had piloted or had reviewed the materials and presented to the committee, but she's not the person teaching the class next school year. That's the CHS one oh one. And so, the teacher that was teaching the class said that she would prefer to use the materials that she's used in the past and not use those new materials. So, we pulled up one of those materials. Then the other class is not going to be taught next year, and so, we pulled that material as well. So, the rest is listed here for the school board in the packet. It starts with grades six through eight, the English Language Arts Intro to Literature by the Hilton Mifflin Harcourt. You know, it's nice to see that the committee came up with the Hilton Mifflin Harcourt. That's the materials that we adopted last year for K through five, and so, there'll be some continuity there in the district, K through eight, with the HMH materials. And then, the other materials are English Language Arts for the high school and Innovation Center. And of course, we do have our world language materials as well. We're adopting the German materials there. But as, you know, as we heard earlier with the public comment, we're still working on our, they had shared that there were options that we are looking at in the future if our option, first option is to hire a .6 position. If we're not able to do that, then we're going to work on other options that we hadn't talked about in our meeting. But we want to have the materials adopted so that if we have a, are able to find that .6 position, that person can come in and teach German using the materials. And then, the other world language materials here are the Authentico for Spanish and Azulejo for AP Spanish literature, and that's similar materials to the Realidad that we use. It's basically updating the materials and a new copyright, but similar materials that we've used in the past and have been well-received by our teachers and our students. So, there we go. That's the information. We've got English Language Arts, grade six through eight, world language for grade eight in the high school, and then English Language Arts for grades nine through twelve at the high school and Innovation Center.
All right, thank you, Dr. Finch. Again, any discussion or anything from any of the board members here? If there are no comments from the board, I'll go ahead and open it.
I have a couple of comments.
Yes, I'm sorry.
For discussion. First of all, I'd just like to say a special thank you to the instructional committee, instructional materials committee. Both our staff and community members and Mr. Heath participated very diligently in the process. It's a lot, this, I mean, for this particular adoption, it's a tremendous amount of work. There were a lot of, there were a lot of materials reviewed. From board members' perspective, I'm very appreciative. I'm also appreciative that some enhancements that we made to the timeline, the, if you couldn't come to the meeting, we adopt, if you couldn't make the meeting for adoption, that we had a pool of reserves. That was a really good suggestion that was made, that we implemented some of these things. And so, as we continue moving forward with the instructional materials committee, just, I would just encourage board and the community to always be looking at our process, just like we are trying to be a district of continuous improvement. The adoption of materials is a critical element, an aspect of the work that we do or that we approve as a school board, but where we really have a lot of our community, both from the staff and from the community member perspective, and it is something that is really important for us to continue to take very seriously. And I know we do, but for us to continue to take very seriously, because as we all know, local control by school districts and school boards is eroding away in this state. And so, we need to seize the opportunity and continue to improve our process and program. But just, that's a little bit of a soapbox, so apologize for that. But I just, again, want to express a sincere thanks to the committee for their work in bringing this to us.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree. I think the process, I think it's improved, but I do think the process needs to be improved more. You know, I, I'm thankful we pulled a couple of books, one in particular, and I'm not going to go into detail about the book, but I think the appendix that we have for the selection committee is maybe, maybe the definition of that appendix is too broad, and I think maybe that needs to be more definitive. I think of the two books that Mr. Heath asked the board to look over. One in particular was just very much clear when it came to the appendix to me and went against part of that appendix. And so, and I don't know if maybe, maybe the, you know, it is a large amount of books, and so, for the selection committee to have to read through it, I mean, I think Mr. Joel is the exception.
German is fun.
You know, and there's no way that they can read through all of those books, you know. And so, I think maybe part of the process we need to consider is how do, can we assign some books to these two members and some books to these two members, and then make the appendix have a clear definition, you know, because we are always continuing to grow and continuing to get better. And I think last year, we took a step and we said, let's make the process better, and that's what we began to do, and I think we still have some work to do there. But, but, yeah.
I'd just like to say, I wasn't going to bring this up because the two books were pulled, and so, it's kind of a moot point, but, you know, again, I think we need to make the process better. All things need to be looked at, but I think the concern that I have is that even with the two books, nobody wants their time. Teachers or instructional material members, if you will waste it, if there is a vote that basically was unanimous on all of these books and to speculate, well, maybe they didn't read them, I don't think is fair to them.
I didn't say that.
Well, that's how I took the speculation of your comment. So, that's all I'm going to say. We just need to continue to improve the process.
Yeah, I'm very excited to continue to work with you, Peter, and see if we can tighten up the process, make it better each year. I'll be committed to reading all of the books that come through, and I'll be committed to seeing on every board, about to make this process as good as we can.
I have one quick thought, just a much softer part of all this, because it is very time-consuming. And by the way, I echo Mr. Thorne's comments to you, Mr. Heath, for all that reading, that's a huge job undertaking. I spend a lot of time going back and forth in my car. It'd be great if some of those were available, maybe on tape, where I could listen to them or anything like that, just so that it's, you know, I could, I'm not losing any time at all, because they are, some of them are lengthy. But just a thought, I don't know if they are available, if we could get them, but it might be helpful if at least a copy or something like was made. It might speed up a little bit of the review process.
Well, I appreciate the input on continuous improvement. That's something I'm committed to, so we'll continue to look at ways to improve the process. The materials presented here today were approved unanimously by the instructional materials committee, and so, I appreciate the discussion and I appreciate, yeah, willingness to work on continuous improvement.
All right. Any more comments on either of those two items under the discussion items, under bullet number nine on the agenda? If there are none from the board, this is a chance for public comment on discussion items. If anyone has any comments they would like to share, again, we don't have a sign-up sheet here with names, but since we have a small audience today, if you have a comment you'd like to make, this is an opportunity to do so. All right, hearing none, we will move on to action items. We have a number of them. We'll take them one at a time. First, the approval of travel requests. Hoping that everyone has seen one is there. If somebody would like to make a motion for the approval of the travel request, we'll go ahead and take a vote. Anyone?
I'll make a motion to approve the travel request.
All right. Thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Kephar. We have a vote, we have a motion to approve the travel request as presented. There are one, two, several of them there, and we'll go through all of them. We'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor of approving the travel request as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Okay, item B, approval of policy addition, revisions, the second reading. And again, those items are there. For those who have any comments, forty, and then also the forty-six hundred, let's do them.
Let's do the second reading.
Yeah.
Forty-sixty.
Yeah, okay. Forty-sixty, we'll go ahead and do that first. Since there are no more comments, if someone would care to make a motion on those items, board memo, policy revisions.
I'll make a motion to forty-sixty distribution.
And forty-sixty, thank you, Mr. Heath. So, we have a motion, all those, we'll go ahead and vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero for forty-sixty distribution of information. Next, we have item C, approval of policy addition, revisions, first readings. There's the twenty-two thirty, transition to kindergarten program, fifty-eleven, sexual harassment of district staff prohibited, and item sixty-eight oh one, capitalization of assets. Again, if someone would like to make a motion on that, we could go ahead and take a vote, otherwise.
I'll make a motion to approve policy additions twenty-two thirty, fifty-eleven, sixty-eight oh one, in their entirety.
Thank you, Mr. Heath. We have a motion, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Finally, we have item D on the agenda, approval of instructional materials. Again, board memo, instructional materials, IMC, instructional materials committee, meeting meetings, meeting minutes? Okay, all those, if we begin to get a motion to approve those items, we'll go ahead and take a vote. If someone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the instructional minutes and the meeting minutes.
Thank you.
Or instructional materials and the meeting minutes.
I think I'm getting the thing with my tongue twister there. Thank you, Mr. Kephar. We'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That one carries five zero also. All right, now we'll move on to item twelve. Items rising on the agenda, anyone have anything? Hearing no items, we'll move on to item thirteen, reports. Dr. Finch, there's a number of them there, but hopefully, all of you have had a chance to take a look at them, unless you have something you'd like to add to those.
No, nothing there.
All right, then we'll go ahead and move on to the superintendent's report.
Yes, we had a nice event sponsored by the Washington Association of School Administrators. As West Valley School District, we were able to recognize a community organization and a student for leadership. Community organization that we recognized this year was the Yakima Valley Partners for Education. They're the organization that helped us access the congressional-directed spending from U.S. Senator Patty Murray's office. Those funds were, allowed us to move a portable to the Mountain View campus and add preschool for students in Mountain View through our partnership with EPIC. So, we recognized them. They're housed at Heritage University, so we had a nice contingent from Heritage at the event. And then, we recognized Juana Munoz Silva for her leadership as a student at the Innovation Center, and her leadership was to provide the technology classes for parents. And what the cool thing is, she attended those when she was a young elementary student with her parent. She saw the impact that it had for her family, how to access a free email account, how to log into email, how to start getting email from Skyward, and all those things that we do, those are taken for granted. And Juana saw the positive impact for her family, so now, as a sophomore, she helped to organize those evening classes for other families. And I just met with her last week. She's going to be going to Run and Start next year in NYC. So, it was this really nice event, and appreciate Juana's family coming to the event, and it was, I thought, very well done. And it was hosted at Apple Tree, so we didn't have to travel too far this year. And then, the other part of the superintendent's report is just continuing to update the board on the PAL program. So, Wendy Clark's our highly capable program coordinator. She's organized sessions over the summer for the teachers that will be doing the multi-age classes. So, there are planning sessions with, they'll be, you know, facilitated by Wendy, and the goal of that is to develop a scope and sequence, a multi-year scope and sequence for project-based learning, so that students will have a variety of activities, and they will not be redundant as they go through the multi-age classrooms. But then also, we had the highly capable advisory committee meeting on Wednesday, May twenty-first, looking for advice from the committee on how to showcase the work of the PAL program. And so, they suggested having a highly capable showcase, showcasing across all the services in the district, doing that in February, and hosted at White Hollows. They can not only showcase PAL, but also have high school students that were in the program as well, and have them there sharing about all the highly capable and advanced courses that are available here at the high school. And so, just have a nice showcase of the highly capable program, do that in February. So, appreciate the input of the committee and helping us to get better. We talked about continuous improvement, so this is something that will help us to showcase the whole highly capable program. Do that in February when parents are making a decision about PAL. And that's the superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Finch. Just typically, we get the board reports, board development. Does anyone have anything? Just a couple reminder items more, I just want to get them before we adjourn for the night. Board members, please do not leave without signing some documents. We need those stuff. And then, just a reminder, and all of you are aware, graduation is coming up. I just want to give a shout out to the school district. Year after year, I've gone to those as board members, and I just think we do a fantastic job. It just simply amazes me how organized and how neatly it's carried out within the prescribed time period. It's just amazing to handle all those students and to see it done so professionally. So, shout out to Dr. Finch and the school district, and especially the high school staff, those who have participated have done a great job over the year with organizing that event. It's actually a fantastic event that many should really marvel how well it's carried out, so. All right, with that, hearing no other items, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting, it's eight thirty-seven, May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Thank you to those in attendance today. Thank you, Mark.